Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order our October 3 meeting of the Marietta City Council. Welcome to everyone. A roll call. Madam City Clerk, could you please call roll?
Councilmember Warren.
I am here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
I'm here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stone.
Here.
Mayor DeForest.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance and our invocation, I'll have you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. If you could remain standing, I'm inviting Pastor Joyce Patman from Great Oak Apostlical Church to the podium to lead us in both the Pledge of Allegiance and well, as well as our invocation. Welcome and thank you for being here.
Thank you for the invitation.
All right.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. I would like for all of you to bow your heads as we pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we first want to pause and thank you for this day, how you have protected each and every one of us. As we went about our busy day, you brought us to this day, through the day and to this place. We honor you, Lord, and we don't want to do anything without first thanking you and honoring you for who you are. Now, Lord, we want to also thank you for this place, for the board, for the mayor, for each and every one that is here, for that you told us in men be business as well as women. So, God, we come and we want to be just that. We want to be able to govern, we want to be able to have wisdom and knowledge of what we ought to do in this day and time. So, we ask you, Lord, in a special way, to bless each and every one that is here for the purpose that they have come for and that you will honor them, you will protect them, you will watch over our Marietta city, and you will bless it as never before. We will bless you and thank you, giving you the honor and the glory that is due you. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor. Thank you for being here for us today as well. Moving on to approval of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda?
Seeing none.
Could I call for an emotion and a second? Thank you, and then please vote.
There we go. Thank you.
Sorry.
It's okay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you so much. Sorry for the tardiness. All right, moving on to administrative update. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. When you leave this evening and you look up at City Hall, you'll notice that it has been lit up pink for Breast Cancer Awareness Month and will remain lit up pink for the next two weeks. The last two weeks of the month, it will be lit up purple, and that's for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So, I encourage everyone to look at the lights, and I'd like to thank our Public Works for making that happen. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you so much, Madam City Manager. Governing Board Commission and Committee reports. Governing Body reports. Is the opportunity for City Council to provide a brief report on conferences, seminars, commission committees, and/or board meetings in attendance. Reports shall not exceed three minutes. Councilmember Warren.
I did attend the RCTC Commission meeting before I went on my vacation to Italy, and I have nothing to report. I should have something to report out next month as we'll be doing a lot of voting. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Lavelle.
I have no updates. Thank you.
Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had meetings at both RCA and Western Regional Council Governments yesterday. Wasn't anything to report at either one of those. Also had a meeting with staff and community leader for the Santa Stops, and that's moving forward nicely. We still need plenty of volunteers. We have a few spaces left, but they have to be live scanned, so anybody that is interested in doing that can reach out to me or the Santa Stops Facebook page and get scheduled to get live scanned and be part of that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Holliday. Mayor Protem Stone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Cal Cities Conference up in Sacramento, and as a voting delegate, there was nothing to vote on, but with regards to the two-day conference, we would actually need a workshop to discuss everything that is going on in the state of California. It was very interesting. There were a lot of topics that interest me, homelessness, mental behavior, health, and I think after attending, I would like to continue on with the Cal Cities and be a voice for Southwest Riverside County. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem. I would also like to piggyback on that. I did attend the Cal Cities, and what a great collaboration it was of our fellow elected and staff. It was a great event with lots of seminars, and like Mayor Protem said, it was information overload. So, I know that we brought a lot back for our city from that event, and I want to thank city staff for making that possible for us to go and arranging everything for us. All right, moving on. Any public comments of a non-agendized items? Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any person may address the governing bodies on any subject matter pertaining to city business. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the governing bodies on any matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes.
Thank you so much.
And I have John Leonard.
Hello, welcome, everyone. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. My name is John Leonard. I'm a 30-year resident of Marietta. And Councilmember Holliday, I'm a constituent of yours, so my comments are intended for you, although I am addressing the entire board. We are a nation in crisis. In my opinion, it is clear that every agency and department of our federal government is utterly compromised. Our senate has no dress code. We have congressmen pulling fire alarms to delay votes, and today we have removed our speaker for the first time in history. Our state government is no better. Sacramento continues the onslaught of legislation contrary to the spirit of the Constitution and values of this community. Across the land, people of every station are awakening to the notion of living in a nation where the people have lost their liberty. You will find these citizens in the school board chambers battling to reclaim the right to direct their children's education, medical rights, and discretion of their sexual instruction, something no one my age could ever have imagined would be necessary, but here we are. Our local school boards find themselves at the center of a national firestorm, as should be expected. Marietta and Temecula grow patriots, fighters, those who won't give up when they know they're in the right, especially when their children are concerned. And although council business rarely, if ever, intersects with school district business, your values and your beliefs do. Councilmember Holliday, your district number two is closely aligned with trustee area number three. You share constituents. The same people who voted for you voted for Julie Vandergrift. Julie, along with Nick Pardue and Paul Diffely, have endured attacks and merciless abuse as they have steadfastly worked towards securing rights for every parent in the districts. I am requesting that you raise as an agenda item a policy or a precedent that would allow the City Council of Marietta, when you find appropriate, to propose resolutions of support to the school boards of Marietta, Temecula, or any other of our neighboring school districts. Your constituents and most certainly your school board trustees, fighting to reclaim the right of parents to ensure their children are shielded from indoctrination as they strive to reach the fullness of their educational potential, would greatly appreciate it. So, I thank you very much for your consideration, and thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Welcome, Andy.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Obviously, my name is Andy Morris. I'm the Board President of Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District. As you all aware, there are four water districts and sewer agencies that cover Marietta, and my comments tonight are only for those residents of Marietta within the Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District service area. We are currently, Elsinore Valley, is considering a new sewer rate to help us maintain our reliable, quality service, ensure health and safety, and account for rising costs. Our last rate increase for sewer was two years ago, but costs providing sewer service continue to increase due to energy cost inflation and obviously regulation, which kills us all. Rates and water service remain the same and are not affected by our proposed change. In the proposed change in sewer rates, a family of four would see an increase of just under $5 a month. We understand this is a significant change that can impact customers. This district has secured $317 million in grants and low-interest loans for sewer improvement projects resulting in $90 million in customer savings. We offer a RARE program funded by our non-ratepayer funds that the district receives to help our low-income customers for utility bill assistance. The board evaluates the RARE program credit on the annual basis to help offset rates. Current qualifying customers receive a credit of $32.68 on their water bill. The board is considering adding additional RARE credit for qualifying sewer customers of $5 per month. This means qualifying water and sewer customers could receive a total credit of $37.68 on their bill, offsetting any increases for those low-income residents. A public hearing is scheduled for November 9th where the board will consider the new sewer rate adjustment, as well as considering adopting water shortage surcharges to align with state regulations should another drought be declared by the governor with mandatory restrictions. Before that hearing, we are holding a special board meeting on October 17th at 6:00 p.m. to discuss the changes, and I wanted to invite the public to attend in person or virtually. Information can be found online at evmwd.com/rates. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Could you, one more time, state when the board meeting is?
Yes, absolutely. The rate hearing is, I'm sorry, let me describe that. Our rate hearing is on November 9th at our regular scheduled board meeting, and that's at 4:00 p.m., but we are having a special board meeting on October 17th at 6:00 p.m. And that will also, people can do that virtually because we know it's hard to get down there. And that'll be filmed and taped and put on our website for people to view as well.
Thank you, Andy, for that clarification.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Connie McConnell.
Welcome, Connie.
I'm in pink tonight, too.
I like it.
One pink lady, two other pink ladies.
The pink ladies, that sounds familiar. Oh, sorry.
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to start off by saying thank you to our staff and to council for all of the help, excuse me, for all the help that you've given us with our Marietta market nights. It's going very well. We're very happy with it, and, but that darn bandit Joaquin Marietta got loose again, and so he's out there running around, and we're looking for someone to capture him again on Thursday night, we hope, because sometimes he shows up at the market. And our Mayor DeForest knows all about this because she was the one who awarded the cash prize to the first winner of that contest. So, thank you for doing that. I think everybody's having fun with it. This coming weekend is the last of our new theater production, and I know that Kristen Crane came to a production. I don't know if the rest of you have been. I know Mayor DeForest is coming on the 6th. I would encourage all of you to participate. It's wonderful. It is the same kind of thing that we really need in Marietta. It's gone over with great success, so we would welcome all of you to join us. The Arts Council is happy that you are, excuse me, I have a frog in my throat tonight. We're happy that you are working on the policy for art in public places, and we know that we have put a lot into it. The kids from the school put a lot into it, and we would encourage you to please agendize it so that it doesn't just go on and on, that there's a time limit set on when you might do that. And the next thing I want to say is, we like the Santa Stops, but we still want decorations in downtown Marietta. Everybody wants them, and they would love to see them down there. And then the only last thing I have to say is, watch out, you guys, because I think you're going to get all run over by a train coming to Marietta.
Thank you so much, Connie.
Amy Edworth.
Now it makes sense what she said.
Nice segue.
Set this out of my way for a minute.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, and good evening, Marietta City Council members. I'm Amy Edworth. I'm the founder of the Pearl Center for Creative Arts and Chief Engineer of the Marietta Train Project. But more than that, I'm a storyteller, and tonight I'm here to share a tale of our beloved city, a narrative woven with history, art, and community. Before I delve into the heart of the matter, let me introduce our nonprofit. The Pearl Center for Creative Arts is Marietta's first cultural arts center and is dedicated to helping weave the rich tapestry of family history, local history, and community art. I like to say that we work to bring history and art to life, quite literally. So, I'm here tonight to seek your support in making that happen on an epic level. I'm here to talk about our historic and beloved Pioneer Park and to ask for your support in making it a priority for our city and to include the Marietta Train Project and Pearl Center as integral parts of this vision. So, as our story begins, I ask that you travel back in time with me, before Washington Avenue became Highway 395, where we enter the crossroads of Calmia Street between Second Avenue and New Clay Street in what used to be the heart of old Marietta, and experience a location steeped in history where the Marietta Train Depot used to welcome families, the old schoolhouse echoed with laughter of the children, and the iconic grain elevator nearby, known most of us today as simply the mill, stood watch over it all. This is where some of our city's earliest memories were etched into the soil and where the first entrepreneurs and local philanthropists established a new way of life. As we fast forward to today, our story takes an exciting turn. Though full of nostalgia for the past, we find ourselves at an exciting crossroads here in the future, on the brink of a new chapter in Marietta's journey. Though the depot no longer stands, the schoolhouse is in ruins, and there are no train tracks in sight, we are not without. We have the downtown-specific plan and the Parks Master Plan, ambitious blueprints that paint a picture of a vibrant downtown and lush green spaces, a future full of promise just like the whistle of an approaching train. And here's where our tale becomes truly remarkable. Picture this, a first-class ticket to a beautifully restored train car shining golden in the sun as a living testament to our local history and as a beacon for artistic inspiration nestled in the historic center of our community. Yes, we already have a train car ready for refurbishment and customization for our city, and it's more than just an old train. It's the heart of our thriving cultural arts center, a hub of creativity and community, a place where history and art come to life through art exhibitions, live performances, educational workshops, and community gatherings, which all become part of our daily life and foster a vibrant landscape of our shared experiences. Now, as we approach the final chapter of our tale, I want to leave you with a suggested ending, a vision for our city's future. The Marietta Train Project is not just a project. It's our commitment to the community in establishing Marietta's first cultural arts center within a train car and a step towards the larger vision that is Pioneer Park, a place where art, culture, and history intertwine to create a vibrant and united community. So, tonight I ask for your partnership, vision, and leadership as we write the next chapter of our city's story together, with the prioritization of Pioneer Park at the forefront and our Marietta Train Project and Pearl Center as shining stars within it. Let's ensure that Marietta's heart beats stronger than ever with art, culture, and history at its core.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was perfect. Nicely done.
Thank you.
Yes.
That concludes public comments.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to the consent calendar, approval of items 1 through 7. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be enacted by one motion and vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless specific items are removed from the consent calendar for separate motions. Are there any requests from City Council to pull any consent calendar items for discussion or abstaining from a vote? Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, for clarification purposes, the recommendation for item number six, if you could please include it as amended. You'll see the last recommendation, we added the appropriate accounts, operating budget accounts, Fund 404, 403, 402. It's the same amount that was originally within the recommendation, we just had to split it apart.
Thank you so much.
Whoever makes the motion, if it could be as amended, that would be great.
As amended. Thank you so much.
Moved as amended.
Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on the consent calendar?
Seeing none.
I'd like to call for a motion, as I heard from Councilwoman Warren, and a second. So, council, you can move that.
Thank you.
All right, and everyone vote. Thank you.
Three, five, zero.
Thank you so much. Moving on to our public hearings, revised permit, 2021, 2429, tentative tract map, 2021, 2428, master development plan, Ivy House. We are now moving to tonight's public hearing. We will receive public testimony, consider and approve the amendment to the mitigated declaration, as well as introduce and conduct the first reading of ordinance number 597-23. We will not be voting on the resolution tonight. This public hearing will be continued to the October 17th meeting in an effort to extend public testimony period. Now, are there any council members who would like to recuse themselves from this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would like to recuse myself from item number eight, as I own investment property within 500 feet of the property.
Thank you so much.
Or the project, excuse me.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem. We will come back and get you. All right, staff, may we have the entire staff report?
Yes. Thank you for the introduction and good evening, Mayor DeForest, Mayor Protem Warren, and distinguished council members. Today, we will explore a site outlined in red that is located in downtown Marietta-specific plan. The property comprises five parcels, and the proposal this evening is for revisions to a previously approved project. The applicant is requesting to revise the master development plan, revise the tentative tract map, and revise the site development plan. I'll be discussing these changes throughout the presentation. There is a history to this project site, as previously stated. This project was approved on May 6, 2008, for a master development plan to establish future development standards, a subdivision of 60 residential lots, and a development plan to construct the project according to the standards of the master development plan. Since 2008, no construction has occurred, and the project has been revised to the proposal we are discussing tonight. The city's general plan land use element identifies the site as single-family residential with a range in density from 1.1 to 10 dwelling units per acre, subject to the zoning for the property. The project's site zoning is residential, single-family one, with a target density range of up to five dwelling units per acre. This project is designed at a density of 3.5 dwelling units per acre, which is below the maximum density allowed for the site. Single-family housing is permitted within the zone, and the use and density are consistent with the general plan designation. So, let's discuss the downtown Marietta-specific plan vision. The idea of a downtown evokes an image of a destination where people have opportunities to live, work, and shop in an environment that creates a feeling of cohesiveness and compactness. The specific plan identifies three guiding principles where this project supports the vision of the plan, and I've shown those above on the slide. The first guiding principle of historic character and pedestrian activity calls for the area to be maintained as a unique community asset. The project accomplishes this by providing improved public streets with landscaping, benches, and trash receptacles, and private development that includes a trail along the creek, creating a walkable, pedestrian-oriented environment consistent with the specific plan. The second guiding principle, sustainable development in open space, calls for development to include building practices such as solar, drought-tolerant landscaping, and best practices for stormwater management. The project does meet this guiding principle of the vision by preserving open space and creating a public walking trail along Marietta Creek. Lastly, the third guiding principle calls for the downtown to include attractive residential neighborhoods that will contribute to the increased activity and economic vibrancy. The project meets this guiding principle of the vision by proposing single-family homes in a compact setting with varied architectural styles. Now, on to the plans. So, you might say, what is a master development plan? Well, quite simply, it's a document that establishes development standards for future construction of the site. Also included is a revised tentative tract map. The site is 22 acres to be subdivided into 62 parcels and seven-lettered lots. The 62 parcels are for single-family homes. The seven-lettered lots consist of drainage basins, alleyways, and open space. The homes are designed to incorporate the look of traditional design elements described in the downtown-specific plan. The homes are a mix of single-story and two-story, as well as a mix of architecture throughout the neighborhood. Here is a plan showing how the lots will be developed with single-family homes, location of the water-quality detention basins, the alleyways, the proposed public trail along Marietta Creek, and the tree-lined streets, improvements along New Clay, B Street, and the internal circulation elements. On June 14th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item. The public raised concerns during the hearing regarding homes close to each other, traffic, water service, FEMA, sidewalks, and crime. The plotting of the homes is consistent with the master development plan and with the surrounding small lots in the downtown. The approved traffic study determined that the project, along with the proposed street infrastructure improvements, will accommodate the traffic trips generated. In response to water service, the applicant has provided the city with a water service availability form demonstrating that the project will be provided water and sewer service through Western Municipal Water District. B Street has missing sections of sidewalks along the route to the elementary school. However, the city will continue to seek grants from safe routes to school to improve the sidewalk connections. And lastly, the Marietta Police Department actively promotes safety through education programs and community partnerships. In addition to this, the Planning Commission added a condition of approval at that meeting to add additional lighting to the alleyways for safety. We did receive one comment letter today, and it was provided to you this evening. Staff did review the comment letter and address these concerns in the staff report and the presentation this evening. So, with that said, it is staff recommendation to introduce and conduct the first reading of ordinance number 597-23. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm sitting in the middle because I'm having little technical difficulties over here, so I'm going to take Mayor Protem's seat for a little bit. So, moving on, do I have any council member questions? Okay, I am going to, I can't see anything, so, yes, so council member Holliday, will you start us off?
What was the original number of lots that was approved?
60.
And it's at 62 now?
Correct.
And one of the comments in the staff reports, one of the complaints that we received from the public is that it was, the houses were too close together. Did the adding of the two lots cause that?
The adding of the two lots did not cause that. They just redistributed the lots to make for a better design. The homes did not get closer to each other.
So, they were the same as before?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Holliday? Councilmember Warren, questions? Councilmember Lavelle, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you provide any context for the request on the CLA on the lighting from the streets? Like, was, it was based on increased crime being darker? Was that?
Yes, so during the Planning Commission meeting, there was comments Yes, so during the Planning Commission meeting, there was comments from the public about crime in the area in general, had to do with Marietta Creek, and there was a concern about lighting in the alleyways, and the Planning Commission thought that it would be best to provide additional lighting in the area and ask staff to create a condition to add lighting to the alley for safety.
The condition is adding the streetlights. Does that mean that the project had no lights, no type of outside lighting?
We were simply clarifying in the meeting the expected level of lighting to be had in the alleyway. There was lighting in the alleyway proposed originally. We were just confirming that the lighting would be even safer than what was originally presented at the Planning Commission.
Is it safe to assume you say safer, but that means more lighting, correct?
Correct.
From what was on the plan? So, what was originally proposed as lighting before the streetlights on the COA?
In the alleyways, there was a light fixture on the garage.
Okay.
We are now, and then we have the additional lighting condition added by the Planning Commission.
Okay. And is there a map of that recommendation of how many of the streetlights would be? So, every house would have a light fixture on the outside of the garage, I assume. Is there a recommendation for how many of these streetlights would be, like, in every corner of the intersections of the streets?
Yeah, Councilmember Lavelle, what we're gonna do is, that condition requires us to sit down with the applicant, do a lighting plan. So, we do know where the exact lighting poles will go for the alleyways. They're gonna be on the bookends of each of the areas. We wanna make sure that the height and the style are consistent, and I think that was what the commenter in today's letter was suggesting, was we wanna retain the character of our beautiful downtown, and we can do that. We can provide adequate lighting levels while keeping the character alive for our downtown. So, we will be sitting down with the applicant to introduce what specific light standards for the alleyways, and Aaron has already sat down and had that opportunity with the applicant to chart out the specific locations, but we'll have more time to sit down and look at the lighting plan.
Okay, so, the COA doesn't mention number of light posts. I just wanna make sure there's not gonna be a thousand light posts required for this to, on the condition, I guess.
No, it doesn't mention the number, but it mentions having them on the ends of the alleyways and in the middle.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Lavelle. I have just a couple of questions. So, the lighting, which has been modified a bit, will you make sure that it's not a nuisance to the surrounding homes that are already existing there?
Yeah, Mayor, the type of lighting that we'll look at is shielded, downward. We will not have any intrusive lighting that will spill across the rights of way, so adjacent neighbors would not have an offensive new lighting schedule. We'll assure that.
Thank you. And another question is, I see that there's two detention basins in that project. Is there any way that we could utilize those detention bases as, like, playground, open area places for, I assume there'll be lots of children in this development, and I know they need to get outside and play. So, could those detention bases be used for also community areas? Of course, when they're not filled with water, right? Yes. But we do live in a desert, so, yes.
Mayor, unfortunately, we've had that chat with the San Diego Regional Quality Control Board, who regulates and requires these basins. We have to avoid them simply because they believe that pollutants by pets and people would be introduced in those areas. So, we do have to fence these off, unfortunately, and not allow them to be used multipurposey. I hear loud and clear, I've had that conversation with the state, to see if we could dual-purpose properties, because it's very expensive to lose that much land to treat the water, but unfortunately, with the way the laws are written versus state law, we can't dual-purpose those areas.
Well, that's sad, because I don't see a park in this development, and I don't see, or am I missing something?
Well, I'm glad you asked the question, because the location of this project is part of what we wanted to highlight this evening. So, I have this map here where it shows that the new families that'll be lucky enough to be buying homes in this future development are close to a number of items within walking distance from the project site. So, we heard earlier today in public comment about the possibilities of future Pioneer Park, which is right across the street from the project site. And then, as we move a little eastward, a few blocks, we have Washington Avenue with those shops and restaurants to visit, and then if we move a little further east, we can see the elementary school that children will be walking to, as well as Town Square Park that has a variety of events going on throughout the year. So, all these things are less than a mile, less than a quarter mile, I should say, walking distance, and these are synergies that will be great for the area.
Right, agree. Thank you so much, but I still wish we could use the detention basins as well, so.
Well, I'll look at the sizing capacity of that and see if there's an area we can etch out, but I apologize, Mayor. I know we try to find as many amenities as possible for our families.
Thank you for doing that. I appreciate that. Always trying to look out for the littles. All right, just my last question would be sixty-six parcels and sixty-two homes. Is that correct?
Sixty-two parcels and sixty-two homes.
And sixty-two homes? Okay, on twenty-two acres.
On twenty-two acres.
Okay, thank you. I just, I had a couple of numbers down, and I really wasn't sure. Okay, so, seeing that I have any other questions from my?
Counsel.
Okay, moving on, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. City Clerk, is there any public testimony? And we'll start with the applicant, which will be allotted ten minutes. We will start the timer, following by proponents and opponents, and then we'll close with some neutral comments. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor DeForest, councilmembers. Nice to be with you all today. I wanna briefly introduce our team. I have Jason Holt, who's a project manager at Diversified Pacific, as well as Justin Brown with David Evans and Associates. He's the civil engineer, in case we have any more technical questions. I wanna thank Jared and Aaron for all their help in processing this project. It's really exciting for us to be here today. There's been a lot of stuff that we've been reviewing, and we're glad to finally be here. I think Aaron did an excellent job at really describing the project, so I'll be pretty quick and just add a little bit more context on the reason for some of the changes and why we're here tonight, but really, I'm just here to answer any questions you guys may have of the applicant. Aaron, can you go to the next slide? Whoever has the thing? So, as Aaron highlighted, this is the existing entitlement on the property. A little bit of background for those who don't know, I know it was covered in the staff report, but this is a property actually owned by the city of Marietta. This entitlement was approved in two thousand and eight, and something that we started discussing with the city, who was looking to sell it in two thousand and twenty. We ended up closing escrow or getting under contract with the city in two thousand and twenty-one, and one of the reasons we were told the city selected us to move forward with this project was really our concept for the site specifically with the architecture. We weren't proposing changing the entitlement, or getting rid of the entitlement. We were planning on keeping the existing entitlement, which was something city staff and ultimately the council thought was important in two thousand and twenty-one, but what we're proposing is using some of the ADU laws to really take, you know, the alleyways that were part of this project originally and really reconfigure how they're used. So, now we have, in the single-family house, there's an ADU fronting those alleyways. So, rather than a typical alleyway where you're seeing block walls, you know, twenty feet apart across from it, you're seeing architecture, you're seeing windows, you're seeing front doors, you're seeing porches, you're seeing driveways, you're seeing people go in and out of their front door. So, it completely changes how a typical alley may be viewed, and that's what kinda got in the conversation about lighting, and now that it's really, you know, the front of a house is also at the back, you know, they have an actual carriage light at the front door, but some of those, those ADU setbacks get pretty significant from the alleyways and having nice, you know, front yards on the backside. So, that's where the Planning Commission wanted us to introduce some additional lighting there, which we are amenable to. So, that was really the concept and something the city really enjoyed. It met a lot of the checkmarks of the Marietta downtown-specific plan of getting people in closer walking distances to all these amenities and businesses. So, something we were excited two years ago about, and something that our excitement hasn't really wavered at all. We think this is an incredibly innovative project that's gonna be really well-received in the city of Marietta for existing and future residents. If you go to the next slide, so as Aaron indicated, this is the existing site plan. I don't need to really walk through this too much, but the reason for most of the changes is just complying with current state laws on particularly treating water. In two thousand and eight, you didn't have to treat water the same way you have to do, so updating our water quality management plan significantly grew our basin requirements, and that kinda snowballed, you know, some other street configurations. There was also some biological issues that wasn't a problem in twenty-eight, or two thousand and eight, that we had to adjust. So, largely, it's the same project that's already, has been approved. It's just some modifications that we were required to do to bring it into conformance with current state laws. If you go to the next slide, so here's the existing floor plans. As you can see, you have a main house. The main house is ranged from fifteen hundred to twenty-four hundred square feet, and then an ADU that's either on the first story or second story at the back of the unit. What's really cool about this product is each, the ADU and the main house, have their own private rear yard, they have their own driveway, they have their own garage. So, you'll see a lot of these where, you know, it's your mother-in-law or your kid from college who's back and is in a back unit. These really function as two independent units if you wanted them to. I mean, you can still obviously have, you know, somebody you know living in there, but having the separate open space, the separate private space, and the separate parking really, really changes that concept, and we think it's something that, you know, the city's gonna be very well-received by the public and future residents of the city of Marietta. So, we finish it with a couple of renderings of some of the architecture that Aaron was highlighting, the Spanish colonial, the American mercantile, and the craftsman. So, here's an image of one of our internal streets on New Clay. If you go to the next one, here's the corner of B Street and New Clay. So, you can see some of the acorn lighting we have along the New Clay and some of the architecture and the landscape. So, we think it's a project that's, you know, really gonna beautify this area, really be an asset to the Marietta downtown-specific plan, and something we're, you know, very eager and excited to start construction on. So, with that, if you have any questions of me and my team, please let me know, and appreciate you having me here tonight.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
I have Michael Maples.
Welcome, Michael.
Thank you for having me tonight, City of Marietta. Appreciate it. Great presentation, you guys. I learned some stuff tonight I didn't know about the Ivy House project, and I just wanna let you guys know that we're very excited that this project's coming together on New Clay Street and B Street, and one of the things that we're concerned about is, let me back up a couple minutes. We've been living in that area for twenty-four years. I'm a building contractor and general engineering contractor for the last thirty-five years, and I got a chance to see the plans regarding the development on New Clay coming down from B Street, and I'm very concerned about the idea that we're capturing all the water now off of New Clay Street. It's no longer gonna be flowing across the project. So, when it does storm rain, anything that hits New Clay is gonna come down from B Street, hit a detention basin in the front of what you saw there, and it's gonna hopefully capture all of it. I just don't have confidence in that at all. I think there's gonna be an issue where that water's gonna go past that detention basin and past that catch basin and dump right onto the three properties that are just to the south of that project, north, south of the project. So, that's just a real big concern of mine. My proposal is a couple of things. Mayor, thank you for being concerned about play area for the kids. It just came to my mind when you said that. They could probably shrink that detention basin down, put a park in there. If they chose to take that water all the way down the street, finish the curb and gutter all the way to Ivy Street, and mitigate that water and treat it at the end of that run, and that would free up that detention basin to grow a park there. That's just a thought, but there's not much more I have. Well, there is. The traffic index, there's gonna be a lot of cars coming down New Clay and also B Street going into the city. Not just a few cars, there's probably gonna be, and I'm gonna be conservative with my thought process, because I'm not a traffic engineer, but I'm just a human being that lives on New Clay Street, but it comes down to, there's gonna be at least a hundred and fifty people leaving that complex and coming back every single day, and I don't see the street handling that load. And some people are gonna say, well, they're all gonna go towards Calooc's to go to San Diego. Well, no, they're not. They're gonna go down New Clay Street, hit Ivy, go up towards Hot Springs. So, it's just a big concern that there's gonna be a lot of traffic in that area, and I don't think stopping New Clay, the development of the street at the end of their project's gonna help take care of that flow all the way to Ivy Street. Thank you for the time.
Thank you so much.
Cassin Klein.
Good evening. I'm here tonight speaking to you as a resident, so this is not my client, don't represent them, and I don't know whether or not the comment you received was an email that I sent earlier to staff today about condition number forty-six. I am in very strong support of this project. It will, the infrastructure that they're gonna bring with raising their property out of the floodplain with their clomer will go a long way to taking care of the problem of, you know, the downtown area that floods, which you're all aware of, that situation and the other developments that, you know, can't proceed because of the inundation and the lack of infrastructure. The issue with condition forty-six, which was added after the public comment period was closed at the Planning Commission hearing, so we weren't given an opportunity to speak to that, and it was Commissioner Vrooman that brought it up about concern for security. And I would note, in the twenty years that I've lived here, and you all know how involved I am with the police department and the city, I've never heard of any crime, significant crime, or loitering in the alleyways that we have right now in downtown. As a matter of fact, most people don't even know of the alleyways that we have. So, you know, with, specific to condition forty-six, I'm concerned with that. If you read the email, you read that how, back when my parents moved here in the early eighties, I'd come down and visit, I'd stand on the diving board, look out, overturn the Hot Springs when I was talking on the cordless phone, and I'd count the lights. It's one of those neat things, something that people that live on the west side can do, but it's also a detriment, in my opinion, of something that close. Had a good conversation with Aaron this morning when he called me to talk about it, and it's not so much, you know, we're governed by the Mount Palomar lighting district, so it's not so much the glow as it is the individual light that the rural residential's gonna look at across, and so, if this is what you wanna look at, as you're up there looking at your view, I don't see any reason to do this. I don't, I think it takes away from the ambiance of the west side and the downtown area. So, I would encourage you to remove that condition of approval for that benefit, but certainly, I would encourage you to support this project and vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Teresa Lyphus.
Welcome, Teresa.
And Mayor, that concluded proponents.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, I love historic Marietta. I live on Fourth Street. I love walking down to downtown to have dinner. I think I ran into the mayor one night in the mill. I am so opposed to this for various reasons. First of all, he presented the ADU. Well, an ADU is a rental unit. That is gonna change this single-family home to a multifamily home. You're not gonna have sixty-two units, you're gonna have a hundred and twenty-four, which means you're gonna have that many vehicles, and where are they gonna park? He says that they have parking for two cars in each location. So, do they have two-car garages? Do they have parking off-street for four cars, because they cannot park at the alleyway? The thing that was brought up earlier about the lighting, they need to put streetlights in those alleys for safety, and they need, the alleyway is- in those alleys for safety, and they need, the alleyway is not far enough apart to have sidewalks and parking, which they're not allowed to have parking in their alleyways. So that is a concern, the parking is a concern. So where are they going to park? Are they going to park down in front of my house on Fourth Street? Probably. So, which brings us to, Fourth Street is going to continue into the development. How are they going to figure out where Fourth Street is? I live about in the middle of Fourth Street where A Street comes across. If you look where the survey line is, that is on the west, the middle of the road is, the survey marker is actually on the west side of the road. So when they build that extension road, are they going to move that over? Or are they going to continue the road as it is? Because as it is, is not per the survey markers. So they're going to have to adjust all of Fourth Street, which brings us to half of the year when we get our storms, and yes, we have lots of flooding. So what are they going to do? They're going to raise their property so they aren't going to flood, but we certainly will. So it's going to make all of us flood more. So they're going to, traditionally, they block off Fourth, Fifth, New Clay, and Second Street. So those are all cul-de-sacs. So half of the year, when it's in the rainy season, how are these, you know, 400, 500 cars going to get to their place? They're going to go down Ivy, or they're going to go down B Street. So I just think it's, it needs to, A, get rid of the ADUs. And you had a question as why the lot size closed, why they're so much smaller now. Originally, they were supposed to be half-acre lots. They were supposed to be like the environment. This is not like any other houses in the area. They're small lots. It's taken up from the flood basin. That's what it is, to answer your question.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, any other, any neutral comments?
No more additional public comments.
All right. Would the applicant like to do a rebuttal to any of the public comments? Welcome back.
Thank you. I'll address a couple quickly. First, the parking. So on the floor plans, the main unit has a two-car garage and a two-car driveway. So the main unit has four parking on their physical lot, and the ADUs have a driveway and in, I think, 80 or 90% of the circumstances, a garage as well. So I mean, there's minimum five parking spots on every unit, and in some, six or seven. So there's, we think sufficient parking on the existing units, and that doesn't even include the street parking that's built into the project. The light condition was discussed a lot. Obviously, that was something that was brought up by the planning commission that we agreed to, so we're still amenable to that condition. We've started preparing the plans for it. It wasn't originally designed that way, but we're okay with the condition as it is. And then storm, storm rain issues. Our project is due, a condition to do a CLOMAR, which analyzes the flood zone and makes improvements that remove the property from the flood zone. It's more than just raising the site. It's building a ton of storm drain around our project and into the Marietta Creek. So it does marginally help a lot of the areas around our property and just provides more storm drain infrastructure. I'm not going to say it's the ultimate fix for the entire area. Obviously, that's a much bigger animal that needs to be tackled, but it does start providing additional storm drain infrastructure. That's the start of the ultimate fix of the flooding there, for sure.
All right. And then if you could stay, because I'm sure council has a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
And Councilmember Warren can start.
Thank you. One of our speakers mentioned that with the flooding, it would probably bypass your project and flood the, if it was really bad, the three homes, parcels, thank you, whatever that word is, on the other side of it. Is that something that you have looked at in your engineering of how you're putting this all together, what could happen if we get major rain?
Yeah, so there's a pretty detailed analysis that gets done with your preliminary hydrology, and we're required to capture all of the water that comes across our site and treat it, and we're taking it to the basin. And I'll ask my civil engineer to nod, but I believe we have to look at it at 100-year storm event.
Okay.
There's the nod.
There's the nod.
So we're looking in designing the project to handle very significant water events. Theoretically, should happen once every 100 years, and unfortunately, they tend to happen more often than every 100 years. But regardless, they're very big water events that our project's designed to handle, which is obviously a drastic improvement than what's there today anyway.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
All right. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Where does the detention basin outlet go to?
It goes to Marietta Creek. The Marietta Creek is immediately adjacent to our property, and actually, our property includes a lot of Marietta Creek. So we're required to treat the water. So in low-flow events, it's percolating into the groundwater, and then in large rain events, there's an overflow on that basin that takes it to Marietta Creek.
Yeah, because it's a detention basin, not a retention basin.
Correct.
And currently, where does the water from that property go?
Kind of a combination. I'd say the majority of it sheet flows across our site into Marietta Creek. So a lot of that, you know, we have to capture and treat, so we're combining it all and outlining it in the specific pipe rather than sheet-floating. But there is some that kind of nuisance flows down New Clay, so that will stop because all the water now entering our site, we are capturing, you know, in storm drains and in basins and taking to our main basin. So that kind of small flow that's flowing down New Clay would be decreased.
So, once the project is completed, the flooding for the surrounding area would be somewhat less than what it is today?
Yeah, yes. It's minimal because we're mostly capturing the water in our site.
On your site, right.
Yeah, but it's slightly better.
Do you have any water entering your site from other properties?
The way the water flows is it's all coming from across the street. So it's kind of coming from New Clay to Marietta Creek. So I mean, it's coming from the city right away, for the most part, across our property into Marietta Creek. There is a storm drain, I believe in Fourth or Eighth, that outlets onto our property that we're picking up and taking down to Marietta Creek, too. So again, that adds to the storm drain infrastructure that, not there today, that we're building that will help facilitate getting that water to New Clay faster.
And you're still accepting?
Getting that water to Marietta Creek faster.
Right. I know what you meant. And you're still accepting the water that's coming across New Clay and designing that into your flood control?
Correct. It doesn't have to go to our basin. We don't have to treat that water, but we are building a fairly large 36-inch pipe from the northerly side all the way around our property, and it connects to the outlet of our basin and then goes into Marietta Creek.
And I know that's required by flood control, and I'm sure staff has been on top of that all through. I just wanted the public to know how that all works.
Yeah, staff's been very thorough in analyzing our storm drain and hydrology for the site.
Thank you. And I wanted to ask our city attorney, as far as the ADU question, this project isn't up to the city regarding what's being built on it as far as ADUs or non-ADUs or SFRs or?
Yeah, the state has pretty much taken away the city's discretion with respect to ADUs. It's very limited. And so, yeah, we don't, we don't have the ability to say no to ADUs. This is a little bit unusual or new in that we're seeing it up front, but we'll probably see more of that in the future. But it wouldn't change if it was without the ADUs, they'd have the right to build an ADU after the fact, anyway.
So what you're saying is if they had built the project previously and had that, say, a backyard space, they would have the right under current state law to come in and add ADUs to all those homes, whether the city wanted it or not?
That's correct.
Thank you.
One thing I will note, that it does change a little bit now that we're designing the project for it, because when you put those ADUs, you don't have the parking requirement. So there's a lot of things that we factored into the design that we think significantly enhance, you know, a project that came in and put ADUs after the fact, that a lot of those design elements are thought about up front.
Agreed. Thank you. The other question I have is for staff regarding the potential for the park and the lighting and that kind of stuff. Are we going to see the answers to those questions before the final approval?
I believe we'll be coming back for a second reading in a few weeks. We can sit down with the applicant and see if there's an opportunity to carve out some space for an amenity. We'll try to have those answers for you when we come back, including the lighting plan.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Councilmember Lavelle, and I think we probably need you again.
It wasn't a far walk, so.
One of the projects, I believe it was when I was on planning commission, it was proposed as a, you could have used the rental income of the ADU to help fund the purchase of the property. Is that part of what you're doing here? Will that be? I don't know if that's even a question for you at this point.
Yeah, so, so right now, they're proposing as a single-family lot. So it's one owner of each lot. I mean, it really is up to banks and their requirements on whether they can use the rental income to count towards a mortgage and things like that. But we do think it does provide an opportunity for housing to be more affordable, to have, I mean, either an income stream, or if you have a mother-in-law or something like that, where you can have those two units. So we do think it helps in that element, but there's a lot more laws that go into that that are in the purview of what we're proposing.
Okay. The was-square footage of the, I think it was 2008 when it was entitled, it was still zoned SF1, and then this new ADU overlay, it's still, it's a higher density than first proposed because of the addition of the ADU. What's the size on average of the ADUs? Because you went?
750.
Okay.
They're all 750, one-bedroom, one-bathroom, you know, in a kitchen-living area, and then they have an outdoor, a private space. One of the floor plans has an outdoor deck, and then they have a garage or driveway in all the ADUs.
And every single lot has the ADU, correct?
Every single lot has the ADU, correct, yeah.
You know, with one of the comments, it was about the ADU being a rent. I know it can be a rental product, but it doesn't have to be a rental product.
For sure, yeah. It's still an attached product, so that ADU is connected to the main unit. You know, there's a wall, but you could easily build a door in that wall. The two private open spaces are designed to be disconnected or broken up by a wall, but you could very easily tear down that wall and have it function altogether.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, that's up to the individual owners of the other properties after it's constructed, for sure. But there's definitely a lot of flexibility on how you want to use the product.
Okay. And my last question for you, one of the renderings had a light post that looked very fitting. Is that, and is that rendering, was that what the planning commission wanted, or they wanted more than that?
So the light you saw in the rendering was the acorn light, which I believe is specific or detailed in the Marietta specific plan, and that's on the main public streets. The lights that we're talking about in the alleyways aren't pictured here.
Okay.
And I believe the way the condition's written is where the ADUs are closer to the alleyway, that the carriage light on the house is sufficient, but in some of the areas where the ADU start getting 15, 20 feet away from the ADUs, planning commission didn't think it was sufficient that the carriage light was providing enough light in the alleyways. So the condition specifically mentions bollards, which are three or four-foot lights in those areas is something that us and staff will vet exactly where they'll go. But you're not going to have big, tall light fixtures in the alleyways. It's going to be small bollard lights that really complement the carriage lights on the house to provide a subtle lighting in the alleyway.
Okay. And if the condition's approved, that's in addition to the acorn lights that are in the rendering.
Correct, yeah. There's a significant amount of acorn lights required in the public streets per the downtown specific plan.
Okay. I think that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. Thanks for going over the hydrology and where all that water is going. I think that's very important, and I understand for residents in that area, being a resident in that area myself, I understand I wouldn't want to subject my property to flooding. It's nice that you're taking the water and then some. The nice thing is putting some infrastructure for water and sewer down there, which happens to be our nemesis in our downtown. So thank you for that. I know that bringing water to that area may benefit other residents in that area with wells or that maybe want to go to city water. Question, it's a two-story product, no hire, is that correct?
Correct. There's one one-story floor plan and two two-story floor plans.
Okay. And looking at your diagrams, the architecture is very nice and downtown-specific, so thank you. It's very, very nice architect, architecture. The other thing is, this project already, just for edification for the community, a traffic study has been performed with the ADA attachment, and it has, maybe this is to staff, a traffic study has been done, and we are passing our traffic mitigation.
Correct, Mayor.
Thank you. And I think that's all I have to say. So thank you very much, and we will, we will not close the public hearing today, we will conclude it, and we're going to leave it open for extended period of time until October 17th for, to allow transparency completely and public testimony to be brought forward if any more will be. We will vote on it on October 17th.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Thank you all for being here.
Mayor, so you can go ahead and call for the motion and the second to continue.
Okay. I'll call for a motion and a second to continue. Thank you. Holliday and Warren.
That would also be to introduce the ordinance as well.
That would be?
And to adopt the CEQA findings.
Okay. Do you have clarification?
Yes, you should see that there, hopefully, on your screen.
All right. To continue the public hearing to October 17th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m., consider and approve the amendam to the mitigated negative declaration pursuant of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, section 15164. Introduce and conduct the first reading of the ordinance. And I have a motion and a second, and I just need a vote.
Yeah, can you do the motion?
Okay. We'll redo the motion. Cindy, you need, there you go. And then Ron?
There we go.
So we have a motion and a second, and then we need a vote.
Thank you for that. Motion carries 4-0 with Mayor Protem Stone recusing herself.
Thank you so much. All right. Can somebody go get Mayor Protem Stone?
She's on her way.
Oh, she's on her way. Fantastic. We'll wait for her to arrive. Welcome back. All right, moving on to discussion. Amend and restate the community facilities district goals and policies. Staff.
Good evening, Mayor DeForest, Mayor Protem Stone, City Councilmember Warren, Holliday, and Lavelle. My name is Javier Carcamo, Director of Finance. And along with me tonight is our city assistant city manager, Ivan Haller, and as well as the city's bond counsel, Brian Forbath, with standing in law. Tonight's report relates to an update to the city's community facilities district's goals and policies. In 1982, the Melo-Roose Community Facilities Act was passed by the California State Legislature, Henry Melo and Mike Rouse, in an effort to address funding limitation for public infrastructure. The act allows any California county, city, special district, and school district to to establish a Melrose Community Facilities District, also known as CFDs. A CFD is a special financing district that provides a mechanism for funding specific public facilities and services. Cities are required to adopt goals and policies for the formation of CFDs. On January 21, 2003, the city council adopted the land secure financing policy for a special assessment and Melrose Facility District financing. The policy complied with the Melrose Act. An amendment to the policy was approved in 2016. The purpose of the community facility district goals and policies is to establish a set of guidelines, criteria, and requirements for the formation of CFDs, including criteria for the sale of bonds to finance the acquisition or constructions of public infrastructure and public services. The primary objective of a CFD is to ensure that the new development fully funds the cost of infrastructure or services imposed on, to the city by those developments. The city's goal is to support development projects that addresses a public need and provide public benefit to the cities and its residents. The goals and policies also establish a set of guidelines for the issuance and administration of indebtedness. Some of the significant proposed amendments to the current policy include an increase in the amount of the developer deposit initially required to pay for the cost of forming a CFD. Establish a maximum of 2% of the greater of the assessed value or appraised value of such property, which is an increase from 1.8%. Such increase would assist in incentivizing developers to participate in funding services, costs of their development that otherwise would impact the city's general fund. The city may permit the escalation of any facilities tax in any amount not to exceed 2% annually for those projects that also participate in the community facilities district. Special taxes for services may escalate in a manner determined by the city as necessary to cover annual estimated increases in the cost of providing such services or as otherwise permitted under the act. Include the development impact fees as a eligible cost to be financed by the district. And lastly, but not least, includes a list of eligible facilities and services that can be financed with the CFD bonds. To ensure that development and financing of public infrastructure and services within the city of Marietta is managed using sound fiscal policy for the benefits of residents, it is recommended that the city council adopt the amended and restated community facility districts' goals and policies. The proposed amendments to the policy complies with the Melrose Act, and it has been reviewed by the city's CFD formation consultant, bond counsel, and city attorney. The report recommendation for tonight is to adopt a resolution adopting and amended and restated community facilities district's goals and policies. With that concludes our presentation. Myself, Assistant City Manager, Ivan Haller, and also our city bond counsel, Brian Forbath. We're available for any questions or comments you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the report, and we'll take some council member questions now. I see Councilmember Holiday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Javier, for that detailed report. Just a couple of quick questions. Do you know why we were at 1.8% in the previous policy? I know I didn't give you the heads up about this beforehand, so if you don't know, it's okay.
No, thank you. I read the 2016 agenda report and update. I can only make assumptions as to why. Certainly, I think it was to incentivize development during the process where we were having a recovery from the 2009 recession, which kind of slowed down.
How would keeping it 1.8% or reducing it from the state max of 2% incentivize development?
Yeah, good evening, Councilmember Holiday. I think, you know, previously, there'd been a trend in the marketplace to have the taxes really based at 1.8%. That was sort of the view that the sale of homes in the district, sort of, it was more beneficial to have the 1.8%. I think what's happened in more recent times is that developers have proven in communities like Marietta, Lake Elsinore, Menifee, and others, that, and throughout the state, that a 2% effective tax rate still doesn't affect the sales price of the homes. And by increasing the tax from the 1.8% to the 2%, that provides flexibility and incentive for developers to participate in a citywide services CFD, which the city is considering to do. And so that's sort of the basis for the change to 2%. And again, a lot of your neighboring communities do have the 2% threshold.
Do you know which cities have that currently?
Lake Elsinore, Menifee, Wildomar. Those are the ones I know off the top of my head here. There are quite a few others. I think City Riverside and maybe Beaumont as well.
But locally, those...
Yeah.
Do you know what Temecula's is?
I do not know off the top of my head Temecula's, but I'm sure we can find that out and get back to you on that.
Just curious. Not that we want to pattern what Marietta does after other cities, because Marietta is better and unique. So this policy doesn't raise taxes, correct? It allows for the opportunity for taxes to be raised.
Correct, yeah. The only way taxes are established is if a developer or homeowners or others come to petition the city to form a community facilities district, and then it requires a two-thirds vote of either the landowners or the registered voters within the boundaries of the CFD to form the district.
But most of the time, the district is made up of one owner, which is the developer.
The vast majority of the time, yes.
Yeah. And so they vote to create a community facilities district, and what's going to go into that district. And then they vote 100% of the ownership shares since they're the sole owner. And then the marketplace then determines if they overstep their bounds by saying, "Yeah, I'm not going to buy your home because you have a 2% property tax," where neighboring development may have a 1.8% or 1.5% property tax.
That's correct, yes.
But it's, the market still has a vote, so to speak, because they can choose not to buy that house.
Absolutely.
Nothing is imposed on any existing residents.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Holiday. Councilmember Lavelle?
Thank you very much, Mayor. The CFD operates differently than something like Measure T, from my perspective. Can, so we did Measure T to fund public safety, and that was on, I think, retail sales tax. How is this different than, or Measure T in terms of, Measure T was a voted item, and this is not?
Councilmember Lavelle, just to clarify this evening's action, this is simply the policy. It's not directly related to a formation of a particular CFD or citywide CFD. This is just a policy amendment or restatement to comply with current statutes and make a couple of other changes that have been frequently requested over time. One of those is the ability to finance development impact fees. We hear that in my eight-and-a-half years here with the city, if there's one thing I've heard over and over again, it's to have that ability. So that also speaks a little bit to the change from the 1.8% to the 2% to allow that to occur. But just to be clear, it doesn't, this action tonight doesn't specifically address a public safety CFD or any other CFD at this point.
Okay. And the CFD, the mechanism, the old policy, I think it was a land use policy we had, this is to update that one to this new policy, which has been revised, I think, one time, is what I read?
That's correct.
Okay. Can we go back to the kind of the was-is statement on there?
Which, I'm sorry, which statement?
There was like a, what it was pointing out that this new policy was going to address or change. It had a couple bullet points, I think, three at the top, three at the bottom.
This one?
So this new policy speaks to the 10,000 to 50,000 raise for those. And then it speaks to the 2% and 1.8%. And allows annual escalators of the special tax by 2% per year for facilities. Can, what it, can, my ignorance in this topic, what is that? Like, it seems like that's a big ceiling. Yeah, so again, a community facilities district is a special tax that is levied on property within the boundaries of the CFD. It's collected on your annual property tax bill if you're a resident of the CFD. So much like your general property taxes is going to show up as a line item on your tax bill, and each year it'll show up as to what, this is what your special tax is, and that's collected. And you can't pay your property tax bill in part. You have to pay it all at once. So those special taxes are then collected and used to either pay directly for the cost of public facilities in the CFD, or they're used to securitize the issuance of bonds by the community facilities district that go to reimburse the developer for public infrastructure that goes into the CFD. If that helps explain that.
If I can add to that comment, the act allows for an annual escalator. Our current policy actually limit that. But the escalator is only needed when there is a increase in services cost. Usually, the levy is just based on what it's needed, and some, most of the, and sometimes the escalator is not required. But this gives us the opportunity to do so if there's a need in the future.
And if I, I'm sorry, if I could add, Councilmember Lavelle, one of the things that we have been dealing with as a city for a long time is we have a number of special districts, I shouldn't say that, a number of landscape maintenance districts or LLDs that don't have escalators. And so we provide services and have provided services for a number of years. And those services, we're paying today for 2023 costs to provide the service, but we're collecting revenues from when those districts were originally formed that might go back to 2,000 or, I don't remember the exact number. So that has created challenges over time not having the escalator. So it's one of the things that we want to make explicit with this revision to the policy.
Okay. And, thank you, Ivan. The, I think, Javier, you had said that when a developer has a significant gap in the funding mechanism, that it would not be covered by the general fund. Has it ever been covered by the general fund for a private developer to seek city funds to help bridge any challenges financially, I guess?
Yes, so currently, as an example, this is related to the LLDs and some of community service districts that we have, where there's services that are at a point where they are above and beyond the actual revenue that we collect. The general fund is currently providing some funding mechanism to make them whole. The other option is if it's to reduce services in those areas, but yes.
So if a CFD, this concept, you either, it pencils out for the developer to pay for everything, or they do a CFD, or somehow it's a combination of a CFD, general fund, and the developer selling the product. Am I correct in that assumption? Or not being built at all?
Today, I would say almost every development that we see utilizes a CFD in some form. It's a very, very common tool.
Did the previous presentation, did they do that? Do we know? The one that was just up here, are they proposing a CFD for their development?
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to whether they've elected to do that or not.
I was just going to, I was curious about that one because it was recent to us and this topic, I guess.
Yeah, it's probably just kind of small, but the last CFD that was established was back in 2006.
And what was that for?
Well, I'm sorry, 2005-5, that was Golden Cities.
The Golden Cities?
Golden Cities.
Yeah, the city issued CFD bonds for the Golden Cities project right before the pandemic, by like 2017, 2018, maybe. Two series of bonds, two different improvement areas, for development.
For development, yeah.
Councilmember Lavelle, if I could just get one clarification on that question you were asking. For the general fund participation, that's not initial why the developer's owning it, correct? That's only down the road when there are not sufficient funds for the continued operations. In the beginning, there are no general funds going towards these CFDs, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
That's, I didn't think you were getting that.
Okay. And that's where the lawn maintenance comes into play. We've used general fund to bridge that gap, correct?
For services. That is correct, and that's a good example.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think I'm done for now.
We'll have more comments.
Yeah.
Yeah. Councilmember Stone?
Thank you so much. I'll tell you that I'm concerned, one of the things I'm concerned about is, while currently our CFD is at 1.8, and it, I think that I read that the reason why the prior council had not had a CFD at 2.0 was to have a buffer. And that concerns me, number one, that we're going to go to 2.0. Under the city of Marietta, city council policy that is proposed, if you go to page three, you've listed everything that's in the CFD. It's my understanding that a CFD is for 30 years. And in the list of facilities here, are any of these facilities will be implemented in perpetuity past the 30 years?
I can partially answer that question. So developments such as, for instance, Golden Cities, they issue bonds to build the infrastructure within those communities, whether that's roads, parks, facilities, all of that. Usually, bond primarily for infrastructure. It can be based somewhere between 20 years and 30 years. When the bond is paid off, then there's no need to have that assessment.
So you're saying everything that's listed here is for 30 years? There's nothing that will be in a CFD in perpetuity?
For infrastructure, yes.
How about services?
No, as long as services are provided, an assessment will be established.
Okay, so nothing in perpetuity that's listed here? That's not true.
Yeah, not in the facilities.
Councilmember Holiday, no matter how you want to slice and dice this, this is a tax increase. These are fees and tax increases. It states it here. It's very, very apparent. And for transparency, which I believe as government we should be, I'm actually recommending that this come back as a workshop because there are a lot of questions that need to be answered, and we don't have three hours tonight to do this. And we owe it to the residents of Marietta to be absolutely transparent. And unless we do a workshop on this and give the residents an opportunity to have a voice on this, I'm not going to support it. In addition, if we're going to be raising taxes on a CFD up to 2% with a escalator of 2%, I believe that the residents should be voting for this, not for council. So that concludes my comments and questions for the moment.
Thank you, Councilmember Stone. I just have a question. This is not only on new development, is that correct? Or only new development?
This is, this would only be going forward. So existing residences in the city that have already been constructed won't be impacted by this at all. This is only on new construction.
So this is from here forward, we are saying that if you build a, if you're building a development here, that you will not be at 1.8, you'll be at a 2%?
It would be a maximum.
A maximum of.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, so it is new development only to move forward, and... it is new development only to move forward and not, no existing current taxpayer homeowner would be assessed an increase in that facility, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Can I make a clarification? Um, you're absolutely correct on that. There, there are certain instances where if you imagine a development within the city that has built and completed homes and they're on septic tanks, for instance, I don't know if that's, I, I imagine there's probably a couple of spots like that. And you can imagine a group of like-minded residents come to the city council and petition the city to form a community facilities district to finance a new sewer line to connect them to a septic tank. So in that instance, existing residents would petition the council and they would vote on that themselves to form a CFD. So there is, the goals of policies is for the whole CFD, for the whole city, but it doesn't impose anything on existing residents unless they choose to do so upon themselves.
Right, and you said it right there, by choice, they would come to the city and ask.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, uh, I will, we'll move back to the council. Oh, where did?
I don't know, I'm on there.
You're on there, but you're not on there. Okay, Councilwoman Warren, I'm having complete technical difficulties, I apologize.
I was there then, I wasn't now, I'm there again, yeah, okay. Okay, I'm going to go back and just reiterate one more time. After the 30 years, if it were to escalate, that would strictly be fee for services to cover the cost the city is in, incurring to keep up the services needed in that district area, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, that is correct. So just to say it back a little differently.
Okay, that's fine.
I just want to make sure. So when a CFD is, is formed, there's a, a maximum amount of time that the special taxes can be levied for. And that's usually for a period of 40 years.
Correct.
That's the maximum period it can be levied for. Um, bonds are usually issued at some point in the development cycle. It's usually not immediately when the CFD is formed. It might be a year or two or, and depending on, you know, Golden Cities or other ones, it was 10 years later. So at that point in time, bonds are issued, they're usually issued for a 30-year term. And when the bonds are paid off, the city would stop levying the tax associated to pay for the debt service on the bonds, which we would call the facility's special tax that escalates two percent. There would still be, um, if that CFD had a services component, then this ta- special tax for services would be continued to be levied on that property so long as there was a need to levy that tax for services.
Services such as parks and restrooms, if there's at parks and landscaping and that type of stuff. And anybody that wants to purchase in that area would know all about this upfront before they signed on the dotted line, is that correct?
Absolutely, it's statutorily required.
Yes.
That the home, that the sellers of the homes disclose this to purchasers, potential purchasers, uh, as part of their escrow papers. Additionally, it'll show up on anyone's title for property. There's a notice of special tax lien that's re- that's recorded on every property within the boundary of the CFD. So it's, it's front and center to anybody who purchases the house.
And this has no bearing on existing homeowners outside of that area.
Absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Um, I'll, I'll move on to public comments, but, um, also, Mel, you mentioned that, um, it seems that most developers want to finance that development fee, and this policy would also allow that.
That, that's correct. Based on Mr. Haller's comments earlier today, uh, that has been one of the, uh, requests that developers, and, and they have these options too with other cities as well. Um, uh, other cities like Menifee, I believe, and there's goals and policies, um, uh, are mirrors the, the act that allows for, uh, development impact fee to be financed as part of the district.
And currently, we do not offer that. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you so much. Um.
I have one more question, if that's okay.
Okay, I, Mayor Potemstone? And then I'll get to you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries.
I recently moved back, um, to Marietta, I had left for a few years. So if I moved away and I came back, would I be subject to that two percent?
No.
I would not.
Not unless you bought a new house.
So if I, so if I bought a new house?
A new house that was in a CFD that was subject to that tax. But not if you just bought a house in Marietta, it would have to be within the boundaries of the CFD.
Right, so I, I would be penalized for buying a new house in this area. With regard to the escalator, um, you have a, an escalator special tax of two percent per year. And I, and I, Javier, I understand that, um, it, it, we don't always have to tax, it depends on the level of services, if there's a deficit. Is the escalator only, it, it, will the escalator on the special tax for, for, for facilities, you talked about the, the, the two percent, raising it from one point eight to two percent, but does the escalator affect any, nothing existing right now? Nothing, only new. So I want to share with you my concerns, fellow colleagues. Right now, we are doing a major outreach for medical professionals to come to Southwest Riverside County as we expand, um, our medical corridor. And one of the things that, uh, has been talked about, about not coming to Marietta is the lack of amenities that we have in Southwest Riverside County. Our medical professionals are going to San Diego and Orange County. And now we're going to up the assessment to two percent with an escalator. And even though you are going to present this when people are signing their escrow papers, it's still another negative, another tax that we are imposing on future residents. And I understand our neighboring cities are doing it, and that's fine, but we don't have to comply with the, our neighboring cities. We are doing very well financially. And I believe that we need to do our due diligence here first before we impose additional taxes on future residents. And this is what we can do in a workshop, is to do our due diligence first in our house before we impose additional tax on new residents. I think we're punishing our new residents, and I think it's wrong, thank you.
Um, I'd just like to do some clarification, John, and then I'll get to you. Um, so new growth, uh, requires more police and fire, et cetera, landscaping, um, and that costs money. Um, you want to live in a beautiful, safe city, that costs money. We want to have the lawns mowed, that costs money. Tonight, we just approved, uh, a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars for one little fire, or sorry, SWAT vehicle, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, when we put in more residents, we're going to need more of these SWAT vehicles, and we're going to need more, uh, police officers, and we're going to need Fire Station Six because we're not going to be able to do without it. So that is how we're going to facilitate as a city to maintain the third safest city in the nation is, um, with those. And is that how we will continue to fund? That's, that's, that helps us fund all of those things?
Yes, uh, at, at a point where the city or we have a developer who would like to form a CFD in the future. Now, tonight's, a- again, tonight is merely updating our policy to comply with the act. Um, this does not increase any taxes or, or fees. It's merely an update to our policy that we have.
Thank you.
Um, at some point in the future, if there is a, uh, a developer who would like to form a CFD, um, to free the infrastructure and or services, then at that point, council can.
Which, which we had last meeting.
A developer that came forward that would like to form a CFD, so, okay.
Can I, can I make a, another comment? You know, I, I understand that, uh, we want to maintain the quality of life here in Marietta, especially when it comes to public safety. And with regards to the workshop again, and holding ourselves accountable here at City Hall first, why don't we figure out what it costs? What future businesses such as hotels that give us one percent back, our car dealerships? Why don't we analyze how many new businesses we need to attract here in Marietta, allow Scott and his team to go do their due diligence again, because we may be fined, we don't know. Where, where's the proof in the pudding here? So again, I'm requesting a workshop to analyze here at City Hall what we can do. If we do everything possible and we still have a deficit, I can see us approving something like this. But we have not even had a workshop to identify every area of the city. And we owe it to our residents to do that before we go back and ask them for additional taxes.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you much. The, the first policy for CFD that the city adopted was their public involvement when that was created. Feedback, workshop, whatever you, whatever you have it.
Councilmember Lavelle, that was in 2003, and that predates, I think, all of our tenure.
Would, would it be safe to say that is best practice to do that first, I guess, when there's policy updates like this?
I don't know on a policy.
Yeah, I don't know, so.
Uh, a policy provides the, the framework, uh, for how a CFD might be formed. On a CFD, there's certainly a, a, a different process, so, but, but again, this doesn't, this doesn't implement a CFD. This changes, um, changes how we do that, uh, a little bit as, as we've been discussing here for the last few minutes.
This ra- this policy basically expands the, the reach of a CFD fund primarily, right? It, it's increasing the, the allotted, uh, amounts that are in that CFD old, older policy.
It would, it would increase the potential cap, uh, by two tenths, yes.
Okay, and then I'm going to just assume, i- it seems to be that the inflationary period that we're in with building and everything costing a lot, this, this feels like it's going to be the, uh, a heavily utilized tool for any new developments i- that are, that are residential. Is it the, the, the pulse of the development, uh, community that you guys are, are close to, does it not pencil out anymore without CFDs to do the, to build developments and, and have services?
For, for large developments, a CFD is, is, uh, is used almost all of the time. Smaller developments, not necessarily, but for large developments, yes. It's, it's extremely expensive to build the infrastructure, the, the internal roads and the, uh, internal parks and provide water and sewer and other utilities. And in addition to the services, so developers frequently use CFDs as a tool to accomplish that.
And I believe I was reading earlier, these types of mechanisms were started after the passage of Prop 13 because it significantly limited the ability for property taxes to help fund these types of things, right?
That's correct.
And so it would be safe to assume our property taxes do not, or at least projecting will not continue to provide the same type of infrastructure needed for developments to be successful.
Well, again, Councilmember Lavelle, for large developments, they, they don't today, which is why developers use this sort of a mechanism on a, on a regular basis. Again, large developments.
Okay, I think that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle, we'll, we'll circle back around, don't worry. Um, moving on, Madam City Clerk, I see there are public comments regarding this issue, and.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Alan Long.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, first, I wa- I got here a little late, wasn't here at the general public comments, and I just want to commend you and, and some of your staff. I had an opportunity to meet some for the first time in your departments and managers, and, and, uh, you, you definitely got doers and, and, and within the organization. So I, I just wanted to let you guys know that, and it, uh, is comforting to know that because sometimes that doesn't happen everywhere. Uh, anyway, on this topic. Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I caught this late, and it, it was a bit of a red flag for me. Um, I'm familiar with the CFDs, and I'm also, I talk to, to all of you on a regular basis, and I've never heard anyone talk about the need to update the CFD policy, never. And I know how difficult it is to get things on the agenda, so I guess I would, I started, well, who, who, who brought it, and then the bigger question is why? What's the urgency? I had, I, I, there's a lot of important subject matters in the city. Why is this urgent? I think it was alluded to during the meeting, so I, I think I'm getting the idea of why you want to update the policy. So that's my question, I hope that gets answered sometimes, sometime at this meeting. But I will, um, give you a little history. Uh, you asked some questions about the reasons why, why the cushion, why that one point eight. There were eight bullet points in 2016, actually, we did have a workshop in 2015 on this, and we ironed out a lot, there were a lot of questions, and reluctantly, we amended the policy. We amended the policy because we were coming out of the greatest recession that we've ever seen, and we needed to have some incentives. However, we weren't going to give a free pass on everything. And the one specifically, these eight bullet points were really for the protection of our residents and homeowners, future and current, if the current residents wanted to create a CFD. The escalation was for the facilities. We didn't want to see property owners all of a sudden get, you know, five years into their home and not be able to afford the payment because of this escalator. Services are different, perfect example is the fire department. Forty-dollar rooftop tax was a lot of money a hundred years ago, or a thousand years ago, whenever they did it. Now it's not much at all, so those are, those are things to consider. The one point eight is probably the biggest one, that was our wiggle room. We weren't going to give a free pass to the developers, they're going to have to get in the pocket, pay for some of the infrastructure, sure, add it on to the cost of the home, that just raises the comp. Now we have a, an, an expensive home next to one that may be less expensive, that's good for the current residents. But the biggest factor of that point two percent was our wiggle room. When you la- allow them to go to two percent max, you're done. That's, there's no more wiggle room. So any unintended consequences or any deeds in the future, you have no ability to raise that anymore. And I'm going to tell you right now, we are seeing something I've never seen in this city, I've lived here all my life. I know that looks like only 35 years, it's actually 53. But we are going through a culture change. With the amount of new residential in the way of apartments, we have never seen this before. That may be good, it may be bad. But that point two percent, you might need that down the road. Those, that's my two cents, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Um. Okay.
Cassin Klein.
Good evening.
Thank you, Cassin.
You know me, always eager, difficult to keep my mouth shut. Don't all speak up. Staff, forgive me. But as I'm sitting here listening to this, and I wasn't planning on speaking on this, I agree with Mayor Potemstone. Listening to you all, it's clear to me there is some confusion of the understanding between a CFD facilities district versus a CSD services district. Big difference when it comes to an escalator and i- i- if it's in perpetuity. Alan mentioned the fire escal- the lack of a fire escalator. The biggest concern to me here tonight, that I think has, has been missed, is adding the diff to a CFD. Because what you have is typically right now, you have a developer that comes in and he's got to pay diff first. And that's recouped when the house is sold, okay? Well, sale prices fluctuate, and so his profit margin on each house is going to fluctuate. If he can finance the diff now in a CFD, he can still get top market price for that house, but the diff isn't included because he hasn't paid it, because it's going to be paid in the CFD by the person that buys it. They may pay it upfront if it's not in the CFD, but it affects his profit margin. So I strongly disagree with including diff in the CFD, if I understand it correctly. So I'll say that. Absolutely, we need escalators, you know, I've, I've seen LLMDs, lighting, landscaping, maintenance districts that had, were established years ago, um, that didn't have an escalator, and those are being subsidized by our general fund, and there's nothing the city can do about it. Mayor Potemstone, try and speak to one of your points about moving away and coming back. I'm not sure was clarified by staff. If you move into a house that is already in a CFD and the CFD has not been paid off, you're going to pay for it, right? So this is going forward. Finally, in a very recent project. is going forward. Finally, in a very recent project that you may have heard, extremely recent, because Ivan mentioned a large project versus a small project, whether it's 62 lots or 162 lots, it depends on the infrastructure that needs to be built. So if you have a project that's coming in and having to build, let's say, regional storm drain, chances are, there's going to be a CFD to cover that. So there's a lot of information here that I think is... I think the council and the residents would benefit from a workshop. And you all know, you've heard me speak several times recently about giving staff more things to do. That's why I apologize to staff up front. But I think this is too important to not fully grasp it. Thank you.
Thank you. And... All right.
That concludes public comments. Madam Mayor.
All right. All right. So let's move it back up to the council member comments or any discussion. And I see Councilmember Holiday.
Thank you. If we approved this policy today, and a CFD was formed a couple months from now, would that come back before us?
Yes. Yeah. It would come back to the city council on at least two different occasions. The first occasion is a resolution of intention to form the CFD, which would, at that point in time, all the tax rates and everything that we've been talking about would be established. It would come back and determine whether there's a tax just for facilities, or if there's a special, a separate tax for services at that point in time. Then after that resolution of intention, that resolution of intention would call a public hearing, at which anybody was interested to come and speak their mind about the formation of the CFD and the eventual issuance of the bonds. That would be after a notice public hearing, 30 days after resolution of intention. And at that point in time, there would be an election held by the landowners, assuming it was a developer, and that would all be it, back to the council. So at least two separate times.
And all CSDs and CFDs would come to council?
So let me pause. There is no such thing as a CSD. They're all community facilities districts. A community facilities district can levy a special tax for facilities, or levy a special tax for services, but it is a community facilities district. A community services district is what the county establishes in an area before a city incorporates.
Understood. But all of those would come back before council?
Correct. Yes.
And if we adopted this policy and chose not to approve one that was at 2%, but we said, we don't want it at 2%, we would have that discretion?
Absolutely, in your discretion.
So this just sets the cap?
Correct.
On the facilities escalator, I understand the reason for the escalator on the services side. Why would we need an escalator on the facility side?
So we do have several CFDs in our communities already with infrastructure being built there, and those CFD have bonds to pay for, sort of, the bonds were issued to pay for those infrastructure. Normally, with the bonds and the debt service payments that are level, normally that's not required, an escalator, because we know what the bond, that service payment is on an annual basis. And as long as the administration of that bond remains relatively the same on an annual basis, usually escalator is not necessary. We only levy what's needed. So normally, for those type of bonds, the escalator is available, but we, normally we don't unless it's necessary. Now, we may have to do that when we may hit a recession, and we have delinquencies within that community, where not enough taxes are being collected. And so that will be the only reason behind that, where we have to adjust the rate through an escalator.
And then, once that default's cured, we could reduce it back?
That's correct.
So these are just the outer limits of what is allowed within the policy. We don't have to approve as a council anything close to that when it comes back to us if we choose not to.
Correct. And Brian, I think the levy comes to council every year.
Yes, the levy does come to the council every year, yeah.
The levy comes to council as well, just like we voted on the LLDs earlier this year.
Yeah, just to clarify that, though, when the levies will come back to council, and if and when bonds are ever approved and issued, that's when, really, the decision is whether you have escalating taxes or not. If the bonds have escalating debt service, you have escalating taxes on the bonds. And once you've approved the bonds with escalating taxes, each year you will be required to levy taxes sufficient to pay the debt service on the bonds.
And I know there were some bonds that were adjustable rate bonds back in the day, but we would have a choice on that, too, when it came forward.
These would be fixed rate bonds.
These would be, but I'm saying we have had those in the past. We refinanced them all to be fixed rate bonds. But at some point, somebody put in some adjustable rate bonds, which I never would have been agreeable to. But if that came to us, and developers proposing to do adjustable rate bonds, we would still have a choice to say no to that, correct?
Absolutely.
And to the one speaker's point about the wiggle room.
You're stealing my wiggle room.
Sorry. Do you want that? Do you want that question, Madam Mayor? I'll leave it to you.
I'll ask that question, Councilmember Holiday.
Well, I was going to offer my understanding of it.
Go for it.
With the policy at 1.8, we don't have that ability to exercise that wiggle room. It's capped at 1.8. There's nothing we can do about it, except for change the policy prior to the creation of a new CFD. So by having the policy moved to 2%, which is a maximum allowed by law, we couldn't go above that. Doesn't mean we have to, but that gives us the wiggle room to do it if we chose. Correct? I got a nod.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Well, that was my question as well. Thank you, Councilmember Holiday. Isn't moving it to 2% that enables us wiggle room, so that we could do a 1.8 again in the future if we chose to? Is that correct?
Yes. Yes. And just to remind council, the 2003 policy was based on a 2%. In 2016, the update, policy update at that point, was reduced to 1.8.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. And I have Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm still going to hold my stance that I'm going to ask council if we could bring this back for a workshop. I think that having a half hour, 40 minute conversation is just not enough, and I think that we need to be transparent to the residents of Marietta. That concludes my comments.
Thanks, Mayor Pro Tem Stone. I see that our city manager would like a moment.
Like, I just want to clarify something. The question as to why we're bringing this to you now. So in my tenure, even prior to being city manager, there has rarely been a budget discussion that didn't have something to do with those upside down CFDs that we have. And so we've talked about it for many, many years, and have always had the intention to bring it back to the council. And this is when we got it back to you. So it's not anything new. It's not anything we haven't discussed before. It's just something that needs to be addressed one way or the other by the council.
All right. Any other? Oh, Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you. This will be my last question on this, I think. The question, I think, that Mr. Long had brought up about how this got so nicely packaged up without a workshop or some type of formal presentation, I hear it all makes sense, but I'm leaning towards a short workshop explanation, community input as well, because we are not, this is not a discussion item, from my understanding. This is a literal resolution, a policy change, without having gone through the same steps that the other discussion items have gone through, unless I miss something. So I would just, it seems fast paced, I guess, and I want to be super conservative about making sure everyone had input on this, at least for a true discussion, not a policy signature, unless I'm misunderstanding something of this and how it got here.
All right. So just to clarify, again, seeing this brought forward, and it's clear to me that we still have the control of the council. It's clear to me that it's a policy change. It's clear to me that in 2003, it started out at 2%, and that we reduced it as per previous council member Long spoke, recession, et cetera, to try to have incentivized building. I am going to make a motion that we move forward and to adopt the restated community facilities district goals and policies. And I will look for a second.
Madam City Clerk, I have a question. Am I allowed to do another motion?
You have to let this motion go through first.
Okay.
So...
A second.
So a motion and a second?
There we go. I see the second.
Yeah, you're on now.
You're the second. There's a motion on the floor.
All right.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor Pro Tem?
So I'm allowed to make another motion?
Uh huh.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to move this to a workshop, to be transparent and above board to the new residents of Marietta, and the existing residents, because there are residents that may want to form a CFD. So I think a workshop is appropriate. That's my motion.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that one.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and vote on the substitute motion?
The first motion?
Yes.
No, the second motion.
The substitute motion. Mayor Pro Tem Stone's.
We're doing my motion first?
That goes first.
Correct. We unpack.
Okay.
Yes. So just give me a minute to update something here.
I have a discussion question on the second motion. Is there a time essence with this policy?
I'll defer that to the city manager.
All right. No.
And when would this, if we went forward with this workshop, when would it happen approximately?
I'd have to look at the 90-day and see when our workshops are. We have one more meeting in October, two in November, and one in December. So we would do our best to get it back to you before the end of the year, but I can't promise.
Understood. Thank you.
We have the substitute motion. Need one more vote. Motion carries 3-2, with Councilmember Warren and Mayor DeForest voting no.
Thank you so much. Moving on to discussion about potential benefits and limitations associated with charter cities. Staff?
I think that's me.
Oh, I think, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Whoa, I just...
Just tore your microphone off.
I did. All right. Councilmember Holiday, take it away.
So the reason I asked for this to be put on the agenda is because over the last several years, the state has, in my estimation, has overstepped their bounds in telling cities what they need to do, including local control for zoning, housing, and a lot of those issues. And I know that charter cities have more benefits than general law cities do. So I wanted to explore it. I didn't have all the information when I asked for this to be put on the agenda. I just wanted to be able to have the discussion amongst my colleagues. I will say that, in my research, so back in the day, you know, 30, 40 years ago, federal government did the same thing with states, as a state is now doing with cities. Federal government said, you will do this. And states eventually revolted and said, no, we won't. We are not doing that. We are states. It is in the United States Constitution that the states were given certain rights. And so the federal government backed off and said, well, yeah, you're right. You do have those rights, but if you don't do what we say, we're going to withhold federal highway transportation funds, and not give those to you, which is basically means they overtaxed the state and kept those funds, and now they're going to withhold them from the residents of that state unless the state did what they wanted. So when charter cities were created, so you have the United States Constitution, the state constitution, a charter is basically the city's constitution, and it grants us certain rights. Now, those rights are kind of in a gray area because courts haven't decided what all those rights are. With the housing issues, there's lawsuits currently in front of the state courts to determine what cities can determine and what states can determine. One of the things that a charter city is allowed to do is determine whether it wants to follow prevailing law, prevailing wage law, or not. That's a city choice. But what the state has done, in looking at what the federal government has done, is they had said, okay, yeah, you have the right not to do prevailing wage if you want, but if you don't, we're not going to give you some of the money that we overtaxed your residents on. And so they basically held us hostage, not us, but other charter cities. And so in my research, I discovered that there's not a single charter city that has chosen to exercise their right not to following prevailing wage law because of that threat. Now, with these lawsuits that are going through the courts currently, the courts could certainly say, it's a city's right to determine what its housing and zoning should be, and you cannot, you, the state, cannot impose upon a city what it wants to be. And the state could turn around and say, okay, yeah, we lost that, but if you want these funds, you're going to follow the housing laws that we put into place. So I don't know that some of these lawsuits are going to change anything dramatically. It's going to go down to process. In your agenda packet, there was a pros and cons list, which, in my opinion, I think some of the cons are actually pros. Can we put that up on the screen, Madam City Clerk?
Let me see what I can do.
That way, anybody watching at home can see it as well. Okay. Thank you. So there's a list of pros. There's a couple of cons. One of the cons is, is that if you want to change your city charter, it has to go to a vote of the people. To me, I don't view that as a con. I think going to the voters, if you want to change the constitution, as it were, the charter of your city, it should be a vote of the people. I mean, registered voters are choosing how they want to be governed. Now, the one con that was on there is that the charter can be amended by initiative process, and you could have some activist that comes into town that wants something different. And go to page two, if you could. So that last one, charter amendment processed by initiative could be used by special interest groups to attempt to undermine the city charter, or by political rivals to cause community discord. That certainly would be a negative to the city if it was used for that purpose. But again, if that initiative got put on the ballot, the entire elected, or the entire registered voters would have to vote on that. And I would hope that if we moved forward with this, which we still need to have discussion about to see if that's what we want to do. But if we move forward with this, I would hope that we pattern our charter after cities that have been very successful in creating their charters and governing their cities, and not the ones that have put together poor charters that were not in the best interest of their citizens. Some of the things that we can do under a charter is we can choose to have an elected mayor at large, like Menefee does, even though there's what's done by initiative process. We could choose to do that in a charter and then have four districts. Those are options. We have options to... We have options to, between us and the residents, to kind of pick and choose what's best for Marietta. And then, if some of the court rulings come down that benefit us and the state doesn't hold us hostage, maybe we can gain some control back over some of our housing decisions. So, I don't see a lot of downside to it. The other thing I wanted to share with the council is cost. Someone had mentioned to me that they thought it was going to cost millions of dollars. I think I confirmed relatively with the city attorney and the city clerk that to add this as an initiative on the ballot for Marietta would be somewhere between 50 and 70, 50 and $100,000, something like that.
Those were estimated costs for just the election portion of that, and it would also depend upon whether this was a special election or part of a consolidated election. So, timing is where the variables come into play.
I would imagine it'd be part of a regular election, so we're not incurring hundreds of thousands of dollars in election cost, but, so, 50 to 100,000. I'd heard estimates of 30 to 50 previously. And then, the other additional cost would be attorney's cost to draw up the charter, which we don't have a solid estimate on, but it certainly would be less than the cost of the election. That'd be a safe number?
The problem here for me is the variables. We're talking about charter as this concept, and it comes down to what specifically is being sought to achieve in that charter, for one, and the second part of that is the process that's taken in that charter. So, if you picture a charter where there's a single issue that needs, and the council is in support of, and we're just going to put it out to election directly, then your lower cost estimates make sense and apply. If you're talking about a situation where it's a complex charter, maybe we're getting a third-party consultant involved because we want to support it and have workshops and have community outreach, and that charter evolves and has changes, that's going to be significantly more legal costs and some even more staff time. So, it's kind of hard to say in a vacuum to what it would cost when we don't even know what the charter is seeking to accomplish yet.
Understood, understood.
But yes, those are the generalities that are concerned.
And I'm not looking to lock you into a number today.
But those are the things that would impact those costs.
And that's helpful, obviously. That's very helpful. So, really, I just wanted to have a discussion just to see what my fellow colleagues thought about it because we can't obviously have those discussions in private.
Thank you very much, Ron, for bringing this up, and I appreciate you trying to save the constituents as much money as possible because I know you brought this up originally for prevailing wages, and I know that the city's got lots of projects in the mix. So, I'll move it to my fellow colleagues, but I did a little bit of research on myself just to kind of do a little bit of background. I think for me, if, just pointing out one thing, is the cost. And the other question is to you, is what are we trying to achieve with the charter? Because really, when I read about a charter, the pro is that no prevailing wages, but it's only to $25,000. So, what project would we have? I would love to build lots of projects with just $25,000, but it doesn't seem that we can do much for $25,000. So, what are we trying to achieve by changing from a general law city to a charter city? And the other one is that if you would like to move to an elected mayor position, we could move that way with a, oops, with a general law city. It doesn't have to be a charter city.
Correct.
What are we trying to achieve? So, that's my question to you and...
Well, outside of the prevailing wage thing, which, as I mentioned, I discovered, because you can exempt yourself from all prevailing wage as a charter city. The state's not going to let you get away with that, and that's why the other charter cities haven't. And the state allows charter cities to do projects of 25,000 or less as non-pervailing wage. That's what they allow, so that's why that's listed as a pro. But my original thing was if we could save, you know, 20% on a project like a public safety training center...
Imagine that.
That would be well more than $25,000 in savings. Since that, in today's world, is not a reality, that was my major reason for wanting to discuss it. But after I've looked into it, I don't see any downside to it. So, I'm totally happy if council is of the mind that's, "Well, let's wait till there's a clear and present benefit to doing it before we broaden the voters." I'm fine with that. I'm not here to, if the prevailing wage was a thing, then I would be pounding the table and say, "We've got to do this because we're going to save lots of money." I don't have that at this point. So, I just wanted to have the discussion, see what the rest of council thought.
Yeah, I just wanted to hear, besides the prevailing wage, why did we want to do this? What was our intent, and where did we want to go with that? Were we trying to fix a problem with this besides, you know, losing local control, et cetera?
That's the number-one thing. It would gain us a little more local control. Again, is that something that needs to be done today? That's what we need to discuss.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that, and I'll move to Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Holliday, do you know what the closest city to our area is that is a charter city? I don't even know of a charter city, I guess.
Well, I know Newport Beach is. City Attorney probably knows more.
Riverside is a charter city.
The city of Riverside.
A number of coastal communities tend to be charter because back in the day, there were land use and zoning issues that they exercised different control over. Most of your larger population cities, San Francisco, Los Angeles, San Diego, are all charter cities.
So, those charter cities that are coastal with the land use issues, you look at some of them, it doesn't look like they were very successful in...
Like I said, a lot of those became charter cities 30, 50 years ago or more. Most of the larger cities, it's for different reasons, changes in the legislative body, wanting to have nine-member councils and extended districts and strong mayors and things like that that go outside the scope of the general state law that applies. So, that's why you'll see that in larger cities, but it's not very common for cities this size that are not coastal cities. That doesn't mean they don't exist. I'd probably come up with some, but it's not super common.
In the very limited reading I've done, Mr. Holliday, it also seems like it doesn't have much teeth to it, right? Even if you were a charter city?
It's less and less as the state, again, uses funding as a tool to get cities to do what they want to do. So, by law, we have control over municipal affairs. What is that? That's what's being defined by the courts. But in reality, the state is using leverage of other monies they give to us to make us behave the way they want.
My, I guess I'll say, I do support your idea if and when it makes smoking gun sense, right? Like, I think it's totally something I would consider and move towards if we had very obvious reasons to do so. The other side is also when, if you had to make that decision or you go in that direction, all you really do by becoming a charter city is highlight yourself to the state, which already is going to be looking at you and say, "Hey, we're pushing back." And those mechanisms for leverage and punishment, I would imagine, would just be much greater. And the irony in all of this is that the entity that grants the charter is the state itself.
No.
No?
No, no, we grant the charter.
Okay.
By the vote of the people.
So, the state doesn't oversee that governmental process.
State has nothing to do with the charter.
If you think of the charter as basically the same thing as your municipal code, except it has to be voted on and approved by the people in order to change it, that's kind of really what it is. So, you can have a limited charter that only addresses a couple of things, term limits, for example, might be a common thing that a charter might put in, council compensation. It could be limited to just a few things like that that differ from the state law but aren't in conflict with the state law.
Got you.
And that's where most charters have developed for purposes like that. What Councilmember Holliday was alluding to and what the state's been doing is declaring more and more things in their legislative acts to be matters of statewide concern. Whether it is or not, they say that it is, and as soon as they say that, it means that you can't have a law or even if your charter says it, that conflicts with that. And we're seeing that primarily right now when housing is the big area, and that's where a lot of lawsuits are involved with. But we saw it in prevailing wages about 10 years ago when they started to do that as well, and frankly, I foresee the state continuing down that path in other areas as well.
This reminds me of as a kid, having friends playing in a fort, and it's no matter how many laws we thought we could control, my mom always won what we decided to do. So, Mother State, of course, being my mother.
That's frightening.
So, to clarify, as January 21st of 2020, there were 478 cities in California. 125 of those are charter cities.
Okay, well, thank you for the context. I guess for my discussion input, I'm supportive of it, but it doesn't seem appropriate, if that's the right word for it, right now, but I'd like to leave it on the table for further consideration.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle. Councilmember Warren?
I'd like that analysis of your mother. And it seems to me, and the city attorney just spoke to what I was going to say. Oh, did I overstep my bounds or she?
No, I'm frozen again.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, Lori, do you want to take over? Oh, okay. You basically said what has been on my mind in the research that I have done also. Bringing it to the forefront so we can have a discussion is important because we can't talk about things unless we're talking it out here, which is the law, and we need to abide by the law. However, this item here, I don't see a smoking gun. I don't see a reason why we need to move forward with it at this time. And it seems to me that everybody that is a charter city right now is being hassled again by the state, such as Huntington Beach. I mean, they're using that to try and knock off the stuff with the housing, and now the state's going after them again. So, you know, and, you know, for discussion purposes, I think it's been very invaluable to listen to all of this, but at this time, I just, sorry, I just cannot support it.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Warren, and now Councilmember Stone. I now see you on the...
She was on mine.
I know, she was on yours, the only one.
Mr. City Attorney, I just want to just clarify a few things in layman terms. Let's just take Huntington Beach, for example, as a charter city. As you know, they're fighting the affordable housing, high-density projects. In your opinion, or would you say that as a charter city, they are going to lose? Are you allowed to make a professional comment on that? I don't want to put you on the spot, but again, you know, if we wanted to become a charter city, that would be the first thing that we would want, is we want local control. We don't want the state telling us what to do. So, are you saying that...
So, that's essentially Huntington Beach's argument. If we want to boil it down, is all these new state housing laws are not matters of statewide concern, and they should not apply to a charter city who has a home rule that's different. That's kind of their argument. And so far, the courts in, not necessarily that one particular case, but in related cases, have not been favorable to cities. They've deferred to the state. I would expect that to continue, given the history and of the Ninth Circuit and the California Supreme Court. I would not expect a decision favorable to cities should this get appealed all the way. Of course, anything can happen, but it's wonderful that there's a city out there willing to take on that charge. And, but there's even, like, they're finding difficulty getting support from the league because there's different, you know, even amongst cities, there's very different opinions about this. So, you know, there may be opportunities to join in Amica's briefs or, and provide our opinions on that matter if it goes up to appellate courts. But, yeah, if I had to speculate, I would not bet against the state on this one.
Okay. Listen.
Can I ask a follow-up to that one point? What do you think that lawsuit is costing them?
Hundreds of thousands of dollars, yes.
Which was listed as one of the cons. You get yourself into legal trouble, and you start trying to fight this with the state, and you end up spending a million dollars in legal fees to try and gain local control.
And remember, Ron, you always lose...
You tell it context easily.
Yeah, that's what a wise young man once said.
Councilmember Holliday, I appreciate you so much bringing this forward because I'm all about local control, and if there's anything we can do to help mitigate the horrific mandates that the state is imposing on the backs of our residents, we want to do everything we can to fight Sacramento. And I'd like to keep this on the table. I'd like to continue watching what Huntington Beach and other cities are doing. So, I say, "Let's watch, and if you find that smoking gun and John Lavelle's mother says yes, then bring it back."
All right, so we have pushed that analogy way far. Thank you, John, for that. I would like to, I would like to agree, until we have clear and concise reason to push this forward and to spend at least $300,000, I think that it should be tabled to another time when there is something to actually point our charter city at so we can get something for our money, time, staff effort, et cetera. But, Ron, thank you.
I would tend to agree. Do we have a public speaker on this?
We do, but, yes.
Before we make a vote?
Yes, let's not vote. We have public speaker. There's no votes, just discussion.
Yes, thank you. So, are you ready for public comments?
Yeah, we'll do public comments. Thank you, my computer is kind of frozen and, so, sorry about that, Kassen.
Don't apologize. Thank you. Earlier tonight, Councilmember Holliday, you mentioned something about Marietta is unique and we don't model after other cities. Mayor Protem Stone, you said something to the effect of, "For transparency, we owe it to the residents to be absolutely transparent." I couldn't agree more. When I started to read the staff report, I noticed under the pros that it says, "Currently there is only one adjudicated paper in the city that is not adequate for providing notice to the people of Carson."
Yeah, that would be me.
That would indicate to me that there was a cut and paste. So, you all know me, I did some research. City of Carson, listed on the City of Carson's website is Sunny Sultani as the city attorney. If I'm not mistaken, that he or she works for Al Shire and Wyndham. So, in my mind, that triggered a question of transparency because who benefits from, if we move forward with this, from writing the initiative? And, Mr. Early, please, this is not personal towards you. I mean, just a few minutes ago, he talked about, "If you move forward with this, hundreds of thousands of dollars." So, the attorney benefits, what do we benefit? So, who wrote this report? Rhetorical question. Other things I discovered, aside from pros and cons, League of California Cities. I mean, there's a whole table here as to pros and cons that we can look at, numerous listed. Aside from Carson, other cities that recently, in the last 10 years, went to charter cities, Palmdale and El Centro. And in the research that I discovered, every single one of them speaking to the prevailing wage, forget the state, you had unions and special interest groups threatening to go against the charter initiative. And we already know the unions are here because they're challenging development projects to leverage union labor for projects. So, I've got some real concerns with how this was written and brought forward with what I believe to be a lack of pros and more so a lack of cons by just looking at this from the league of, there's at least, I'm going to say 30 or 40 that could be. So, again, it appears to me that this was provided by the city attorney, and the people that benefit from this, how it moves forward financially, is the city attorney, and it's, we don't know how much that check will be. I'm pleased to hear, it sounds like we're not moving forward with this, so I'm pleased to hear that. Councilmember Holliday, I appreciate you looking into it, though, looking out for our best interests. Thank you very much, and thank you for the extra time.
Thank you. All right, so, thank you, Councilmember Holliday, again, for bringing this up and making us all research about charter cities. So, now we know exactly what a charter is and a general law city. So, thank you for educating us as well. us as well. And this was just an information item, so we're going to move on to governing board announcements. Governing board announcements is the opportunity for the city council to provide miscellaneous reports and announcements. Announcements shall not exceed two minutes. The city clerk will use the computer timer. Councilmember Warren is first on deck.
And I will be deferring, I will remake my report at our next meeting, thank you.
All right, moving on to Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you. Closing out the night. All right, I attended the recent coffee with the city, had a great time. I love coffee, so I'll go to any of those that I can, and I got to give some updates from the city to the residents at that event. I also attended the Wildomar State of the City, and they gave many updates on infrastructure improvements, lots and lots of road improvements, so really thankful to hear those coming from the Mayor Joseph Morbito. That was a good event to be at, and I was happy I could be there. And then I was also asked by Mr. Assaly, he's an assembly member for a little bit north of us here. We did this Riverside County Sheriff Fitness Benefit for the three recent fallen sheriffs that had fallen in the line of duty. This was essentially a CrossFit competition that he signed me up for. We showed up, all the proceeds went to the families, there's a benevolent fund that they used to help out the families that these three guys had left behind. Really fun event, I think it's sixth year, I think it's in our third year, I believe. And here's me with a couple, Chad's wife, Denise, and then there's Mr. Bianco with one of the family's parents, or one of the fallen sheriff's parents right there. Anyway, great event. It's every year, if you guys are interested, next year I'll tell you all about it.
Thanks for attending that. All right, moving on to Councilmember Holiday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple that I'd like to highlight is I attended the Myrieta Chamber Award Celebration on September 23rd. Our chamber does an amazing job for the city, it's involved in so many things that help out economic development, so certainly appreciate them. A lot of worthy recipients that night of the many awards. Also attended Eastern Municipal Waters District, State of the District, and in my short time being on council, I have found Eastern to be a very agreeable partner in looking at our infrastructure issues and moving those things along. So I appreciate that entity and was happy to be there to support them. And then I will let Mayor Pro Tem talk about the next one.
Oh, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Stone. I didn't get the segue there, Ron, sorry.
You can review my governing body announcement meeting on our website, but there's two events that I'd like to highlight. We had our second annual human pink ribbon to launch Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We had double the amount of participation this year, which was really exciting. I want to thank Michelle's Place, Susan G. Coman Breast Cancer Foundation, and Van Avery Prep School out of Temecula that came over, and you could see that it was a beautiful morning, and as our photographer was taking the picture, it started to rain, so. But anyways, the response was pretty phenomenal. And then, next, in partnership with the Riverside County Department of Public Social Services, Miller Jones Mortuary, Myrieta Police Department, sir, thank you so much, Riverside County Fraud Department, and Riverside County District Attorney Office, I hosted an identity theft and scam workshop at the Colony. And if you have never attended one, I suggest everybody, it was so informative, and it was actually scary to hear the testimonials from all these governmental agencies in what is happening with the different types of scam. You've got romance scams going, you have gift cards scams going, you have social security scams, and it's amazing how they can access your phone and your computer and lock it all up. So there was very, very interesting information. In addition, there were resources and phone numbers available to everyone if they had any questions, if they have been subject to any of these scams. And anyways, I hope to do another one next year, because two hours definitely was not enough to address all these issues. So that concludes my governing body announcements.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem Stone. I will defer mine till the next meeting. Just want to give a shout out, this Saturday is the Susan Coman Not Just a Pink Walk, or Sunday, I'm sorry, did I say Saturday? Yes, this Saturday, or Sunday, excuse me, Sunday, please come out for that. We want that to be a great event. Moving on to council members' requests to add items to future agendas. Now is the time for council members to request to add items to future agendas. There will be no discussion on the requests, a brief explanation of the agendas may be given, the merit of the items being requested may not be discussed or debated. Now, are there any requests for any of my colleagues to add an item to a future agenda? Seeing none, thank you so much, and without any further business, I will adjourn this meeting with a second.
Second.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.